Okay. I can't see who's at home, so. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 4th meeting of the Common Council of the City of Algoma. I'd like the clerk to take the role, please.
Mary?
Here.
Dashlet?
Here.
Boor? Russell?
Here.
Weeze? Jackson? Mervin?
Here.
Pabick?
He said here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Okay.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First of all, let me apologize to you people at home. We had a few glitches tonight. This is not being televised live. It's being taped and will be played back at a later date. I don't have the ability to see you on the big screen. So if you have a question or something, now the big screen's back up again. I apologize for that. So this is gonna be a little delay. So if you have a question or something, please hold your hand up. And that way I'll know you have a question, or even when you're voting, if I ask, if you're in favor, just raise your hand and we'll just take it in the order that hopefully we see everybody, so. Again, I apologize for the delay, but we'll get through this. Approval of meeting minutes for April 6th, April 15, and April 21st. Does anybody have any questions of those three sets of minutes? None? I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment, we have nobody here for public comment this evening. So we're going to move on to the general bills and credit card payments. If you've noticed, you've gotten a different format with your bills now. Does anybody have any questions on any of the bills that were in your packet? Who's that? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the bills and the credit card payments.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by John. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Mervin?
Yes.
Weeze?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no requests for any conference attendance. We do have one claim. This is a claim that was submitted against the utility. But of course, because the utility is owned by the city, it's got through our insurance carrier. If you look in your information, there's a letter from the insurance carrier. And after basically investigating it, they're coming back and say that the, there was no liability as far as on the city's behalf. We were not negligent. So I need a motion to disallow the claim that's been submitted by Harmon Studio. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Seconded by Jake. Any questions or comments on that claim? Scott?
Who all has access to those keys?
To?
Turning the valve boxes on, I read into that. Apparently somebody turned the valve box on and flooded the inside. Is that something that any, is that something that's available over the counter or through the public trades?
No, that would be strictly.
Answer that?
That would strictly be able to be done by any one of the utility employees. They would have the tool that's used to turn those valves on. Matt, I don't know if you can, if you know what we're talking about. The gentleman claims that the utility turned it on, the utility saying they didn't. After investigating it, the insurance company saying that the utility was not negligent. But as far as your question, Scott, and I'm not saying that that tool isn't out there. It could be out there, but I doubt if it is. So no, it was not turned on by any of the, any utility employee from what we could see, so. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
We already have motions.
Who?
Um, Lee and Jake.
Lee and Jake. Do. The motion has been made and seconded to disallow the claim. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports. Again, like normal, we don't really have a lot of committee reports because a lot of the committees haven't been meeting. Since this is not televised, oh yeah, it's gonna be televised, I suppose, alright. I will go through the finance and personnel. That meeting was called to order on April 15, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. by yours truly. The roll was taken. Consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance was gone over. There was a motion made and seconded to pay the bills on the credit card payments. There was nobody in attendance for public comment. There was discussion about the potential action on the Port-au-Prince invoice. Port-au-Prince was the company that did some work for us down in the Marina. And the council questioned the bill from the provider. And later on in the meeting, they voted to only pay a portion of the bill and not the entire thing. After that, we talked about seasonal part-time and new hires, Mitch Zimmer. And then we have some other ones that will be acting on this evening. There was an ordinance change that was presented by the chief of police. The financing committee talked about that and they're making a recommendation for that ordinance change tonight. Discussion on the bond anticipation note for the medical center parking lot, that'll be acted on tonight. Then we talked about the park and rec financing of their new truck and also the financing of the new street sweeper. There was also discussion on the digestive condition assessment services, which we'll be acting on tonight. And also the phosphorus compliance plan agreement that we'll be acting on tonight. There was talk about the Sixth Street storm sewer lift station study, which we'll be acting on tonight. There was a proposal from the city administrator at our pay scale. Looking at the pay scale that we adopted a few years ago and looking at revamping it. That'll be for discussion on a further meeting. There was also discussion, no, there was no discussion on the health insurance waiver. We were waiting for some more feedback from the employees, so that's being held over. That was basically the finance and personnel meeting. And it adjourned at 10:59 a.m. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Then I will go down and we will skip right down to the library. Jake, would you like to give us a short library report?
Very short. Everybody was present at the April 20th meeting except myself. April 20th meeting was called to order at 4:05. There was no public input. Friends of the library report. The book corner's last open day was Friday, March 20th. And it won't be opened up until all of this COVID-19 stuff is taken care of. The director's report. The library closed on March 17th. The staff worked on projects the following week in the library and had begun working from home where the safer at home order was put in place. They're working on a number of programs. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but pretty much kind of the types of programs that they're preparing for summer activities for kids. Some of the programs have been added to the Algoma Community Access Television Schedule for those that do not have access to Facebook. The library staff worked all day at the polls and enjoyed it on election day. The library staff is putting in place a summer reading program now. And now, and is now in process of revamping it due to the COVID-19. Stay tuned for more information. All library due dates have been extended through May 1st. So if you've got a book due, please drop it off at the library. We will begin curbside pickup of books, magazines, periodicals on April 27th. Call the library between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. or Monday, Wednesday, and Friday and between noon and 6:00 on Tuesday and Thursday. Treasurers report revenues and disbursements were presented and approved. Library bills, a motion to approve the April 20th expenditure were made, seconded, and carried. There was no old business. New business 2020 subprogram funds will be used to purchase child and young adult nonfiction titles. Personnel policy review, closed session, none. Open session, none. Items for next meeting will be the 2020 personnel policy. Was adjourned at 4:27. And just in brief historical events from May. Christopher Columbus discovered Jamaica in 1494. Obviously Cinco de Mayo on the 5th, and Alan Shepard was the first American in space on the 5th in 1961. The Golden Spike was driven in Promontory Point, Utah in 1869, connecting the east and west coast by rail. And the first permanent settlement was established in Jamestown in 1607. So there are a lot more fun things going on in May. Read your history and enjoy your stay at home. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Does anybody at home have any questions on Jake's report? None? Okay. Then we'll move on. The next report would be Met Board. John? Are you able to give the Met Board report?
Medical Board of Met was zoomed on April 23rd at a late start. Started at 4:51 instead of 4:30. Members present, all were present with the exception of Don Wagner, who was excused. We went moving, we moved to the election of officers. The results of the elections were Joan Bressel was reelected board president. Marge Rodrain was reelected vice president, and I was reelected as the board secretary. All of those were by acclamation. We had approval of the agenda. We moved things around a bit so that Matt could present on the parking lot bid process. There was a bit of a nasty surprise in his presentation in that when the contractors started the work, they discovered that the 12 inches of aggregate stone that was supposed to be underneath the blacktop was missing. And they could not guarantee the work without it. This resulted in three different options being considered. The one that was selected was the option to go ahead and do both the front and back parking lots for an additional cost of $41,510.50. The funding for that will be through the revised Bank of Luxembourg bond activity, which will go from 181 to, actually to 230,000 with 5,000 for contingencies. That was passed on a roll call vote with five yes, zero no. Motion was carried. Approval of the minutes took place from February 27th. Moved on to the fiscal report. For March, we had 79.5% occupancy. February was at 82.6. Average daily census was 33.39 in March, 35.93 in February. Net profit for March was $50,077 for February's $30,032. We had approval of the bills. Vote, roll call vote, five yes, zero no. COVID preparations are needs. Jean talked about the staff and the stresses that they are under right now. And the fact that other facilities offer an employee assistance program remotely. She has identified a company called ERC that has a flat $3,200 annual for unlimited calls. There'll be further discussion and determination at another meeting. As a matter of fact, I believe we're having a meeting tomorrow at 4:30. Again via Zoom. Under capital repair, we had the laundry air handlers. Initially, it was gonna cost us $5,000 for the repair, but Kevin Clark and the contractor put their heads together and came up with a different solution that seems to be working quite well for $600 instead of 5,000. Thank you, Kevin, for using your brain to reduce that cost. Mayor Schmidt let us know that there were free masks from the Kiwanis-Iris Guilds that were available, free of charge on Friday, April 24th, from 12 o'clock until the, until the supplies were exhausted. There was no report from the Friends of the Long-Term Care. Administrator's report reflected that we'd have increased reimbursement for Medicaid by $4.41 a day, moving that per diem up to $213.57. Lakeland will increase by $19.02 per day, raising their per diem up to $227.79. The COVID quarantine isolation area has been constructed. Will be used for the first 14 days for all new admissions. Admissions are down due to routine surgeries that normally require long-term care for rehabilitation being canceled. Plans are being made for emergency staffing that would mean 12-hour shifts for 72 hours and 72 hours off. Procedures for preserving PPE are being initiated. The long-term care unit is applied for a small business administration care grant. And I believe that they have, they've been picked up for that. They had to get a ruling separate because they were municipally owned. That was the only glitch to it, and they prevailed. Pandemic is taking a toll on the staff in terms of stress, anxiety, and uncertainty. More support for the staff is needed. You know, we've had some staff terminated for less stressful opportunities. There are no active COVID cases in the facility. Any instance of an active case will result in mass notifications to families. Outlining situation are plans going forward. While we are screening to keep this out of the facility, it can be passed by persons having no symptoms. Testing is not 100% reliable by any stretch of the imagination. And it's the best we can do at this point. State inspectors went through the telephone survey with Jean regarding our infection control procedures that we have in place. The state went ahead and sent ration PPE from their stockpiles. We are truly concerned about COVID case hitting the nursing center, nursing home. We've got folks who are employees that are at risk. Plus, we have folks who are pregnant that are also at risk, and they would have to be at least temporarily discharged. So that's a bit of a problem. Next regular meeting is at 4:30 on May the 28th. We adjourned at 6:28. And there's a special meeting, like I said, tomorrow at 4:30 via Zoom. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions at John's report? Anybody at home? None? Thanks, John. We'll move on to utility. Lee?
President Guy Hodge called a meeting of the Utility Commission to order at 5:30 p.m. in compliance with the open meeting law. Four members present, one was excused. Other present was Scott Wees, Pete Hawke, and Nancy Johnson. There was a motion and seconded to adopt the agenda. There was a motion and second to approve the previous meeting minutes. No comments from the public. Old business temporary water services were provided for customers on the Navarino Street project. Please see the manager's report. Planning commission updates, no meeting. New business. There was a motion, there was none in new business, sorry. Motion was made and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the 2019 year-end. Financial reports, including the Gatsby 68 entries. Motion carried. There was a motion and seconded to approve the January, February, and March financial reports as presented. Motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the 2019 annual Wisconsin Public Service Commission report. Motion carried. Commission received individual copies of all job description, employees' accomplishments, and goals for the review of the concept exception goals for 2021 budget. Managers report, Hawke requested pricing from Peters. Concrete to repair the area is damaged by water main breaks on Stassen and North Third Street. Peters concrete was lower bid, low bid that is currently working on Navarino Street project. Repairs included 110 feet of curbing, 110 feet by 18 feet of blacktop and a catch basin. Verbal estimate provided was the same unit price against bid on Navarino Street project. Price for the blacktop from northeast asphalt is not available yet, so Hawke calculated an estimate based on last year's price. Total estimate cost of repairs is approximately $17,240. The job will be completed on time and the material basis was unit pricing. The commission agreed on a verbal consensus to have Peters concrete do the repair project since he's already working in Algoma. A blacktop pricing in northeast asphalt will provided at the next meeting. Reviewed the office managers report, there was a motion made and second to adjourn at 6:04 p.m. Next meeting is May 20th at 5:30.
Questions or comments?
You have a comment. When I see this, the job will be completed on a time and material basis. We just had a huge issue with that. And I would make sure before we say Peters, go ahead and do it, we do get something from them. So the 17,000 doesn't end up 37,000.
He is gonna.
Okay.
But at the time, he had to get it.
Right, I realize that.
Put it on the appointment.
But we wanna go back to that time and material.
Because I said that to him. I said, we got, just that day, we got caught on something else, so I said, we do it, so.
Good point. Good point. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Lee. Then let's move on to the RDA report. Jared?
Yep. Our RDA meeting was on Tuesday, April 14th. We had an update on the redevelopment area two, which is Block 10. Which is Block 10, over by Denny's Supermarket and Perry Field. It was a follow-up from our previous RDA meeting where we're basically looking at a fourth option, which would be a hybrid of options two and three in the original proposal presented by our consultant. So we continue to discuss what that would look like in the next steps, including getting the cost estimates for public facility grant monies, which would include, we need to get some cost estimates for potential sidewalk, sewer, water, and electric improvements. So we've done that. I also gave an update on our CDBG grant application. The big development from that is that the county will not be submitting the grant on behalf of the cities of Kiwanis and Algoma. Instead, the cities have to individually submit them, which we are working on. The good news with that is that it actually allows us to apply for up to $1 million in public facility grant monies instead of just 500,000. So that actually works to our benefit, although it is an added, you know, labor on the city and our consultant. But we are confident we can get that done. In order to do that, we also need to have a couple of public hearings prior to the June 25th deadline. So right now, those are both scheduled to be held on June 9th. And our next meeting is on, well, it's next Tuesday, May 12th.
I have one question. Did we get our sewer and water figures that we were talking about, Matt? That we asked you to get for us?
Yes.
And from the utility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions of the RDA report?
When does that money get awarded, you know? We'll know. We were given a range. Everything's been pushed back because of COVID, but at the latest, mid-August.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jared. Let's move on then to accept the motion to approve the receipts of the committee reports that were presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under old business, we have a ordinance, ordinance 827-2020. And that's amending section 32.2, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Algoma, reflecting the offenses against state law. We're only gonna do the first reading and a final this evening because we need to get this thing put in force. Everybody have a chance to review this. It was brought up the finance committee. Chief Remicker went through it. Any questions on it at this point, that you had a couple of weeks to review it? If there are no questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 827-2020.
So moved.
Moved by John. Seconded by Kevin. Roll call vote.
Russell?
Yes.
Weeze?
Yes.
Mervin?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes? I'm assuming you said Pabick, is that correct?
Yeah. Schmidt? Oh, he's saying yes, he's just on mute.
He's on mute?
Mary?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Okay, all yes.
Thank you. Let's go on to new business. Motion to approve the hire of Mitchell Zimmer as a seasonal part-time park lawn maintenance worker. Sarah? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
What was the rate? Do you want it to start, Matt?
He will be starting on, at step one, I'm sorry, and that rate is $10.75 this year.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Moved by Jackie, seconded by Kevin. Any questions on that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B is the motion to approve the hiring of Jerry Cummings as a seasonal part-time cemetery lawn maintenance worker. Sarah?
Yeah.
At what rate, please?
He will be also starting at step one on the pay scale, and that is starting at $12.29.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Seconded by Casey. Any questions on the motion or the hiring? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the hiring of Jerry Cummings, Dan Heinrich, Arnie Miller, Tom Ulatowski, Austin Fazer. Are we adding in Randy Dashlet? Are we, you're talking to him?
I'll talk to him and probably bring him back to finance.
Okay. As part-time Marina service workers. One thing I'll comment on this before I ask for a motion and then we'll open it up for discussion. Because we no longer have a Marina manager down there, and these employers are gonna have to accept a little more responsibility than they did in the past. We're asking that we start these individuals at $12.23 an hour. Similar to what we're paying the people at the cemetery. That being said, I'll entertain a motion and then I'll look for discussion.
Moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Seconded by John. Are there any questions or comments on this hire, on these? Are there any questions or comments on this hire, on these hirings? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, let's move on to Resolution 1012-2020, and that is authorizing the preliminary phosphorus compliance alternative plan agreement with Strand and Associates. This is an engineering, right, Matt? Do you have any comments on it before we?
I do not unless anybody has questions once.
I'll entertain a motion and open up for questions.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
I'll second.
Second by John. Any questions or comments? You saw that the cost, it was in your, in your packet under the agreement. If there are no questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 1013-2020, authorizing digester condition assessment services with Strand and Associates. Again, this would be an engineering um, cost. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Mitch. Questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 1015-2020, authorizing a bond anticipation note for the medical center parking lot.
Just give it to me, Mayor.
What?
F.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I mean, okay, just give me a minute, Kevin, don't get excited. Um, resolution 1013-2020, and that's authorizing the digester condition assessment services with Strand and Associates.
No, 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 next one down, F.
Robbery, leave, property design and building of Sixth Street Storm Lift Station.
Well, that's where I was going with the next one.
No, you went with the medical parking lot.
Okay. Resolution 1014-2020, authorizing robbery, lien, and associates to perform design and building phases of the Sixth Street Storm Lift Station. And again, that's an engineering proposal. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by John. Second by Lee.
Kevin, who's Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin and John? Excuse me.
Kevin and Lee.
Kevin and Lee? Excuse me. Questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, resolution 1015-2020, authorizing a bond anticipation note for the medical center parking lot. Uh, the finance meeting that was brought up, and the parking lot in the east and the west side is being redone, and Amber went out and she got uh, some decent rates from, I think, the Bank of Luxembourg, and this is here, basically, the bond anticipation note that we need to approve this evening.
Oh, that includes the extra 40,000.
Yes, it includes the extra monies that we found out we needed by putting in more fill. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? Any discussion? I'm going to do a roll call on this one.
Wees?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Merron?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Havik?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 1016-2020, accepting $150,000 grant from the Fund for Lake Michigan for Crescent Beach Stormwater Project. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by John. Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Excuse me?
Hold on, how is this fitting in with the bid um, by JRR Group? JRR Smith Group?
I didn't, I didn't get your question, excuse me?
The question is, is how does this fit in with the bid, or the bidding process that the JRR Smith Group has gone through to come up with the, the, the work to be done?
Hang on a minute, John, I got to ask Amber because. Did you get the question, Amber?
I did. So, JRR Smith is the engineer that is doing the bidding for us. This is just additional grant money that will help cover the costs, depending on what that bid comes in at.
And the deadline for that ben, is bid is what, May 8th or something?
It was supposed to be May 8th, there's been a request to extend it one week.
Okay.
So, they'll know something by the end of this week, then?
No.
No, by May 15th. One week later. Yep. It was a large DOT project that quite a few of the contractors that want to bid on ours are also working on, so they asked for some extra time, and the engineers felt that they could get everything reviewed in time for the next finance meeting.
Any other questions?
It was a little bit difficult to hear all that.
Can you hear me, John?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay, um, she said that the RFPs were supposed to be done May 8th, and they have been extended to May 15th because there evidently is a big DOT project that a lot of these contractors are bidding on, so they wanted to extend it, and the, and the engineer said it was, they thought it was okay to extend it a week. This is just additional monies that we're receiving now to go against that project.
Right.
So it's a big plus for us.
Right.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 1017-2020, and that's just authorizing the lease with Explore Algoma for the kayak rental services. Don and Katie had a lease with us last year. Uh, they're the individuals that down at um, Olson Park have the kayak rentals. The, if you've ever driven down there, their business kind of took off last year, and they want to extend their lease for another year. Nothing has changed in the lease. The amount has stayed the same, everything's stayed the same, but we just need to renew it for another 12 months. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Who's that? Casey? Second by Casey. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 1018-2020, authorizing the sale of Serb Plus Marina docks. Matt?
These are the, the docks, the old A dock that came out and have now been moved up to the street shop, they're in the back of the street shop property or to the south of my office. They'll be numbered 1 through 19, 21, whatever is there exactly, and people can bring into City Hall a sealed bid, and we will um, grant those to the highest bidders, and they will have to haul them off-site. We'll load them, but they'll have to remove them off city property.
On a per each basis, or the whole shebang?
Per, per basis, so if you want to come and bid on 1 and 29 and whatever, um, you'll get, your highest bid will go, and it will work right down the line. Hopefully, everything will, will be gone.
What's your deadline for the bids?
Um, we'll, we'll actually post it tomorrow, but I'll probably give them two weeks to get, you know, bring in and put numbers together, so.
Okay.
Hey, Matt?
Yep?
Our, our, I know that there was a list of a couple of people that were interested beforehand, are you sending notification to them guys?
The people that have uh, expressed interest, we will reach out to them and let them know that they're out to bid.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion? Hearing none? I'll accept the motion to approve. Moved by Scott. Second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Administrators report?
Uh, yep, so, um, as you know, um, the, a couple of weeks ago, April 20th and April 21st, we cleaned up Crescent Beach, including the removal of the, um, all the driftwood and the, the accompanying structures. Um, we received a little bit of negative feedback on that, as we expected, but overall it was generally very positive. Um, obviously, with the high water, we've had more debris washup, so we'll be cleaning up again. Um, we went through last week our elected official training. Um, I wanted to thank everyone for, for coming and doing that, we had everyone attend. Um, we had a lot of good discussion and questions and things of that nature, so um, I think that was really beneficial for everyone. Uh, so again, thank you everyone for coming. Um, zoning board of appeals, uh, we have received a variance request from Expedite Development uh, for a setback, and this is in regards to the Bell Harbor condominiums, they want to erect a, a sign, um, but they need a variance because of the, uh, the setback requirements to put them down the hill, where it wouldn't, obviously, wouldn't be visible. That meaning is scheduled for um.
May 19.
May 19. Um, so we'll be holding that. Um, RDA, I already gave an update on that as part of the, the minutes report. Um, and then as far as just coronavirus, COVID-19 update, again, City Hall still has restricted access. Um, people are still able to get in, you know, we have a doorbell out there where they can call and make an appointment. Um, but, you know, we're just doing it to try and limit any gatherings of multiple people, basically, one at a time. Um, and then as soon as we're able, the public works crew will be splitting into those two separate shifts that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, they have not yet done that, uh, but they will be as soon as we're done with the work that requires the entire crew. So like the docks going in and things of that nature, so.
Does anybody have any questions of the administrator?
Do we have a policy on mask wearing?
No.
We do not.
Should we?
Um, I, I, that's something that we can look at, but I, I don't know if it's necessary given the distance with which everyone's apart, but we can, we can, we can consider it for sure.
Any other questions of Jared? Hearing none? We'll move on to mayor's appointments. Uh, utility commission appointment. I'd like to reappoint Bob Valice and Guy Hosh to the utility commission. Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Second by Jackie? Is that Jackie?
Yes.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, if you notice on the agenda, I have the 2020 census, just reminding everybody, um, if you get something in the mail, please complete it, or if you get somebody calling you, it's important for a city our size as, as far as a different type of funding that's available to us, and it's all done by population. So if you haven't filled out your census, there's also information online that you can contact them and fill it out. It'd be greatly appreciated. Um, again, I'm going to apologize for tonight. Um, this coronavirus is, is getting under everybody's skin a little bit. Um, we just had some technical difficulties. Uh, this has been a learning curve for us. I apologize that we weren't able to start at 6 o'clock, and hopefully, this replay will come back, and everybody that watches it will be able to see it, and it'll be clear and able to understand every, all the business that was done this evening. Are there any agenda items for the next meeting from anybody on the council? Or any of the managers? Hearing none? Our next meeting is Monday, June 1st, and I hope we'll be somewhat back to normal. Um, keep your fingers crossed, this is not an easy thing for anybody. It seems that there are more cases of the COVID-19 uh, every day in Kiwanee County, so if we all stick together and we all work through this as a group, uh, we'll get through it in life, hopefully it'll get back to normal. Mitch?
This would usually be the meeting where you remind us of the Memorial Day Parade. I have not heard yes or no, I assume no?
I got a, I got a voicemail this afternoon from um, the commander, Ms. Steiner. They're going to do some type of video, she asked me if I could do a speech, she did not. I'm taking it that the parade and everything is going to be canceled, but I don't know that for sure at this point. I didn't have an opportunity to call her back before the meeting. I'll call her tomorrow, and as soon as we know if it's been canceled, we'll get it out on Facebook and uh, we'll have the chamber get it out, but it's very unlikely that it's, everything's going to continue like it did in the past, so. Any other questions? John?
Right here. Yeah, I would like to have on the agenda for the, for our next meeting, an update on the beach project. By then, we'll have the, the bids should be closed, we'll have a little bit better of understanding of how that's going to work in the timetable.
Any other questions from anyone? Anything you want to see on the agenda? I know this hasn't been easy for you people at home, but please bear with us, and um, hopefully by the finance and personnel, we'll have a little better idea on what we can do and what we can't do, so. With that being said, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by John. Second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned, thank you.
And may the fourth be with you.